Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Etomo City Council meeting. Appreciate everybody for coming to Bridgeview. We're going to have our council meetings here for the next several months while City Hall's getting renovated, so appreciate everybody's understanding and patience, and I appreciate Scott for making the arrangements and setting it all up for our city council meeting today. Before we start, if there's any prize, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Pope?
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
And I guess I'd like to just make a quick comment for transparency to the public. Councilwoman Pope is not here tonight. Her brother in Ohio passed away over the weekend, so she's with her family in Ohio, so that's why she's not able to be here with us tonight. So our thoughts and prayers are to her and her family. The first item is motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is approval of the tonight's agenda.
I would motion to amend the agenda by moving item H2 to be presented slash discussed under section D, Administrator's Report.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
The next item would be then do we have a motion to approve the amendment of agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is our City Administrator's Report to Council and the citizens of Etomo. I'll turn it over to Phil Rapp.
Thank you, Attorney General Mayor. We have a number of items and the one additional one who's added here for tonight. We've had a couple of individuals that have reached out to the city that want to get before the council and the public and give some updates, reports on status of where things are. First one we have for tonight is from Etomo Water and Hydro, Tim Albert. He wants to provide updates to the dam and the hydro and everything water.
All right. Can everyone hear me? All right. Attorney General Mayor, Council, thanks for hearing me today. I just wanted to give everyone an update. A few weeks ago, we had some, there's a lot of community that are concerned about our dam here in Etomo, Miami, too. Just basically, a little backstory is, is earlier this year, we got a letter from our regulatory agency, which is FERC, F-E-R-C, as we call it. That's the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And when you make power, you're regulated by FERC. And so part of their mandate is dam safety. Some of the concrete on the dam has deteriorated enough that it needs some serious, serious repairs. They kind of gave us an accelerated schedule to get the work done. That was really not able to be accomplished, especially we are a calendar year budget, and so nothing was budgeted. There were no plans, there were no specifications, there were no contractors drawing up for that. So we have employed our engineering to give us a new cost estimate that would include just getting the work done that needs to be done, as well as all the work that needs to be done. I know that there's been a lot of talk about removal, that it's obviously an option that we have to investigate. If we can't make the repairs and we can't afford them, that is definitely something that has to be considered. It obviously is not the preferred choice by any means. We have since also started work towards looking for some grants. We probably, at next month's board meeting, will probably get someone hired on to help search for some of those grants, and that is very, very tedious. Phil, there's a lot of people in here that worked on grants before. Sometimes these big ones can be well beyond the capability of a small staff to perform. But, so that's where we're at. We're looking for cost estimates right now, so by the end of this year, we should have a cost estimate for what the repair costs on the visible portion of the dam are. By the spring, there should be someone come in and they're going to do an underwater inspection of both the downstream and the upstream side of the dam. Downstream will be towards Bridgeview, upstream is where the deeper water is. And then we'll see what the footing of the dam looks like. So I don't put myself up any questions about this because I've met some of you, and so we're very early in the process.
So for the better good of the public, Tim, you're not going to have the total cost on everything to price sometimes spring of 2024, correct?
That's probably pretty close. We should have some estimate of the visible portion by the end of this year, but then we won't know the underwater portion, so.
Does Council have any questions? Tim?
So, Tim, I know you and I have talked in the past about this, and looking at some of the banter that's been going back and forth from the general public on this, it tells me that there is a general lack of knowledge about the dam and, you know, where it was, where it is. Could you give a little bit of insight into the history of the dam and the finances of the dam, specifically going back all the way to the 50s when this really became a conversation point? Because I think that that really is important for the public to know, as to, number one, how that dam got here, some of the challenges that it's had as early as the 70s, and then to where we are today.
Sure, I can go through some of that. I did do a little digging around, because Chris asked a few questions. So the Library of Congress, if anyone ever wants to do some digging around, it's a pretty interesting website. I actually have a copy of the 1910 newspaper when the citizens of Etomo purchased the original dam and hydro from a public water supply company. And the first thing that they did when they took over is they put it under control of a group of trustees. The first trustee, his last name was Waterman, because I think it's pretty cool. Anyway, there's been, so there's been a dam in Etomo since before 1900. It's been various different forms. The first companies that put them in, they went broke because trying to, mother nature didn't play well during the contract period. We've all seen that, where sometimes it's just too wet to work, sometimes storms too cold. But anyway, the first one was Spelover Dam, and there was a narrow channel that came through town, and they used it to, the old building that used to be next to the current water plant that we tore down several years ago, they used that to turn pumps. It was a jack shift, and at the time, they had pumped river water straight into town. So most of what they were looking for was for putting out fires. There had been a few hand drawn wells, but this was before the electrification of the country. It made a lot of sense at that time, because there wasn't rural, or there wasn't electricity readily available across the country. Around 1931, in the heights of the Depression, that's when the original hydro was built right there, and they had extended the channel up to 200 feet. 1947 comes around, the town gets flooded, and they take it upon themselves, the citizens do, from what I read, I obviously wasn't around, to straighten out the river. And they worked up, they spent a decade trying to get things figured out. And by 1958, the city had the plan to straighten out the river through here, and that included widening out the channel to its current width. In 1958, the council had asked the waterworks as their contribution towards that river channel to put it in the dam. Obviously, that way the hydro could stay in operation. But there was a study done in 1958 that basically said they don't have the bonding capacity or the deck incurring ability to put that in. So at the time, they kind of put their heads together, and there was a statute where they could have taxed up to one and a half percent for fire protection because of free water service and fire hydrants. From what I read, what they chose to do instead was give one percent of what that would have been out of the general fund each year to pay towards that. That way, they could afford to make payments on it. When they did all that, they did a 40-year note on it, and things were going well until 1972. That year, other than getting in excess of $44,000, we got a payment of $3.06, 1973, up to zero, and that's when John Morrow was left out. And so it was devastating to our community, just was. That's really, when you look back, why we have so many mandates on so many major infrastructure during that time period when we lost so many people. And finally, there was a new agreement put in place, and they continued to pay until the mid 80s. And up until that time, we'd been able to make repairs. Our license had allowed us to, if people remember back in the day, there were many times where they would just drain the river and crews would go out and work in there. In 2008, when we had to get relicensed, we no longer retained the ability to just draw down the river whenever we wanted to. We were required to do it within a certain window, and the ambient temperature was less than 70 and greater than 32, and for seven days of the time period. Which if anyone knows Iowa and trying to mobilize crews from out of state to do months' worth of work, it's just really, really tough to do that. We did the first gate, where we were able to set the stoplogs. Stoplogs go in behind the gates on the upstream side. Those were able to be set with cranes on the dam bank, or the levees, and they stayed in place for longer than they should have. Then when we went to move them, talked with contractors about just moving them to the next slot, and let's just work our way the rest of the way across the river, that's when the question got asked, that what was the weight capacity? I don't know why that had never been addressed before. I can't answer that question, but at that point, we got some engineers, we went through the plans, and it was only 30,000 pounds. Each section of stoplog weighs about 14,000 pounds, so you've got that weight to deal with, plus a crane, and it's limited in what, at that point, that's when we realized that we had some problems, and we went on a search through, we've had, I don't know how many contractors in to look at it, we've hired engineering firms to look at, can we build up the deck or rebuild it in place? They've looked at, could we move in a mobile crane to be able to set those off that way? None of those, all of those were just cost prohibitive. And now they had to make some repairs.
I guess I just have one last question. Over the decades, knowing that there wouldn't likely be, and again, this goes back to the 1958 conversation that was had between the waterworks and the city council, why was there never a sustainability fund placed for repairs and maintenance and possible replacement of the dam?
Well, before my time. I wish I could answer that, although I just don't have the answers for that.
Fair enough.
I just, you know, I was born in 76, and this was put in in 50, so.
I was just going to say, so Mr. Robert, you and I also met, and you clarified some things for me, too. So when you say removal of the dam, can you give us a little bit more information? Because I think that there's some misconceptions on what that means exactly.
Well, I hope that that will happen. I hope that we're able to find some grants to help with this, but what I would envision if that happened, that would just simply be the metal gates in between the biers pulled out of place. Obviously, there are, you know, the biggest effect would be to those upstream, obviously, because of the pool of water. But as far as, would we have enough water to operate? We wouldn't currently, even as low as the river is, as 300 cubic feet per second, even at our max capacity. There's 193 million gallons a day coming down the river right now, and we, at max capacity of the water plant, that would be 12, and we're making about 5 million gallons a day. So there's a lot of water there, it's just pooled up.
Can I just have one more question, Mayor? So if we, like, if our dam was very low, or let's say the water's low and it's not full enough, we do have another source that we use, correct?
Yep. So west of town, we have the alternate water supply. There's about 100 acres of water there. If we were to use it 100%, we'd probably gather around 30 to 45 days' worth of capacity there. Currently, that's upstream storage, so we have to reclaim some of that water. It doesn't come in from the ground. A lot of people think that it does. I've been told that, no, you get all your water from out there, you know, evidently I'm wrong. I've been told so, it's all right.
And I'm going to ask you two questions again, just for transparency, so the public knows the answers. You've already told me what the answer is. But who technically owns the Etomo Hydro Dam and the water treatment plant?
So technically, that's, it's owned by the citizens. That's, it's owned by the citizens of Etomo, of the city, so we're a municipal water treatment plant. But ever since 1910, the duties have been delegated to the board of trustees, so.
And if the decision does have to get made down the road, whether to take the dam out or keep it, what entity's going to make that decision? Will it be the Etomo Water and Hydro Board of Trustees, or will it be the Etomo City Council?
Currently, that would be the Board of Trustees, but obviously, obviously, as a big deal as this is, we're, what my plan is, is once we have all the costs together, both the above water and the below water, then I want to have a stakeholder meeting, so that we can get everyone here, we'll probably use this exact room, to go through and look at what all the options are. At that point, once we actually have some costs available to us, and we also can see what grants are available, to see if there's what we call the hope. We hope that we can get this grant, and if it does this, then have a comparison of what does it do to the citizens' water rates. Obviously, you know, 44% of our community is at 200% or less of federal poverty level, so that is a big, big thing we all need to think about, because people are struggling, and that is something that we see on an every-week basis that a lot of people don't get to see, is just exactly how many people are struggling in town.
I got a question, Tim. If it gets to where we're going to do some work to repair, is there any way the state, earlier you had said that you only got that one week timeframe, and we're not the only city that's struggling in this area having trouble, is there any way that they could be a little more diligent and get?
So currently, because we have the federal license, that's what we've considered as kind of the path forward. Without, without, with the federal license, you have to comply with what the license says. If we were to show you without license, there may be an avenue, and that's what we're going to explore. So we will, we will be, does it look like the dam are to see, is there an avenue, obviously, before we surrender everything? Also, if we come up with a viable plan that includes some affordability through it, then we can start bringing all the groups to the table and saying, all right, can we draw this down, and what is a balanced approach? Maybe we can bring it down slowly, and then leave it down to get some equipment mobilized and get in to do what we can do, get the stoplogs in, maybe move in from the water side of things, and then let it build back up, do the work. Maybe we can do a balanced approach to that, but as it currently stands, we have to comply with the license.
I appreciate you being here tonight, because this really helps out. I wish the people complained or hear, because they can get educated in 20 minutes instead of going on Facebook and trying to solve their problems. So I appreciate you being here.
That's fine.
Attorney General Mayor, I have a question. Speaking of the federal license, is there any specific advantage to maintaining a federal license over and above surrendering it and working with the state?
Without the federal license, you can't produce power and sell it. That's, that's the only advantage, is that you do gain a little bit of revenue. But if you take a look, it's over the last 10 years or so, as far as net profit of operations on it, it's only been about $162,000 a year. And then if you, you guys work with numbers, that service towards that estimate of 20 to 25 million. And that was just an estimate based on previous repairs, and we use an inflation calculator coupled with, so once we get some new estimates, you know, we'll be able to dial in that number a little closer to see where it's at.
Specifically, upon $160,000, what percentage of your current revenue basis that, is it, I'm assuming just a couple of percent?
Let me pull that up for you. So our total budget next year for revenue is going to be around $9.6 million. So if you take $200,000 out of that, it's pretty small. Obviously, today, our draft budget was posted, and so take a visit to that, too, if you guys would like. And we'll have that on the approval coming up, but they won't ask anything.
I just have a couple more questions. So you identified, well, first off, a lot of people always assume that we're, you know, agencies are full of money, so what are the sources of income that?
Yep. All right. Sorry, getting a little dry. Apologize. All right, so the revenue for Etomo Water Works, we sell water, obviously, that's our main source of income, and a little bit of electric sales. Additionally, we do have some reserves, as any sound agency does, so we get a little bit of interest that way, and we charge you guys to bill for the sewer and garbage. Let me take that back, there is a little bit of farming ground around the lake, and so we do get about $6,000 a year in rent for that. So those are our only sources of income. We don't have the ability to tax, but we do have the ability to borrow money, and so 100% of that has to be paid back from water directly, basically.
And insurance, speaking in transparency, so the dam isn't the only concern of fixing that you have, right? The building's getting pretty old, too?
Yep. So the water plant was built at the same time that the dam was, so obviously, ancillary systems are starting to age out very quickly. We'll have some, you know, putting mandates on the boiler every year to try to keep it going. Anyone who has a building here in town, obviously, knows boilers are pretty expensive to repair. We've had, obviously, additionally, the building is absolutely chock full of asbestos, just like any other old building of the time. So we have been making as many repairs, and obviously, we can't shut down. We have to keep operating nonstop, 24 hours a day, 365 days. I mean, that's one of the things that a lot of people don't realize, is that we are actually staffed around the clock. There is always someone at the water plant, and we always have guys that go out, and when a water main breaks, they will stay until it's fixed. And twice this year already, we've had guys that have worked in excess of 24 hours straight to try to keep the community in water, and they just dig in and they go. So we've got a really, really good crew of folks, so.
Thank you.
Council, have any other questions for Tim? Phil, do you have any questions you want to ask?
No, I think you covered it, and Tim and I met and went through, you know, everything here tonight, so.
Yeah, we've been, we've been meeting, yeah, I guess, on that sense of, like, Phil, he's doing a good job keeping me in the loop on everything, and he's doing a good job.
And I know we talked a week or so ago, we had a meeting I attended, and I hope that at some point, there will be like a community forum opened up to the general public to just come and hear some of this basic information, because I agree with Councilwoman McIntyre that people don't have the right information, or they think they do, and then they start spreading it on Facebook, and pretty soon, there's a lot of erroneous information being spread all over. So I really hope that at some point, we can have some kind of a community forum, and the general public can just be invited to come and hear what you just said tonight, because I think it's important for people to have facts.
Unfortunately, this item is a very large item that can't really be condensed into a two-minute soundbite.
Right.
And hopefully, hopefully soon, I've kind of got a compiled list of questions that I've heard, and I've been putting together some answers, so hopefully, you're here real soon, but kind of an FAQ released onto the website, so that we can at least get some of those common themed questions out there just in one spot. So if any of you have any questions on that, feel free to email me, you may call anytime, so we're always available. Do you want me to go over the budget, or next week, or next time?
I would say next time.
Perfect.
Thank you, Tim, for your commentary. All right, so next up, we approached our Etomo Regional Health Center, had contacted the mayor, wanted to give an update, the most one out there. We have some members of the leadership team from Etomo Regional that are here to present.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks so much for having us. My name is William Key from the CEO of Etomo Regional, and I'm joined with two others. So I have Justin Lemoine, and I'll let him speak in a little bit, and we have Tom Lozio. I think some of you know Tom. I asked Tom to join us, because he has joined the ranks. We're in the process of getting Tom to join the ranks of the Etomo Regional, so that we can get out into the community more and share the message of the good work that's being done at Etomo Regional. And so first, thank you so much for this opportunity. Really, we're here to share what exactly is going on at Etomo, because I think that we just heard that there's some misinformation out there about things that are happening with the dam. I think the same is true with what is happening at Etomo Regional, and so we're here to give information and hopefully help folks understand what exactly is happening. So October the 15th was one year since the date of a very significant event at Etomo Regional that impacted the community in many ways, it impacted the organization dramatically, excuse me, with the death of a provider. Subsequent to that, the CEO of the time was released, and I arrived. Today is my one-year anniversary at Etomo Regional. And so it's been a year, it feels about four years in the making. We have had intense regulatory scrutiny at Etomo Regional over that year, and so 365 days in that year, and 100 onsite regulatory days in that year for us.
Still have to hear.
And we are still under regulatory scrutiny. So we've had the DEA onsite. The DEA comes onsite as an agency to arrest and fine, and so that is special in every sense. They did leave after their investigation. Their investigation was about five months long. We anticipated anywhere between $4 and $6 million worth of fines to come from that, and just because of how things go with the DEA and other hospitals. And we're very proud to let you know that after five months of very intense scrutiny, we were able to account for every drug that they asked for. And there are three tiers of what can happen with the DEA. One is, well, I guess four. One is someone's going to get arrested. That didn't happen, thankfully, because that would be, and so, and I would not for a while in prison. So that's one. Two is fines. Three is you can, they can put you on an action plan, and the fourth would just be a letter of reprimand. They closed out their investigation of Etomo Regional in March, and we put ourselves on an action plan. We fully anticipated that if they're marking the fines, that they would adopt that action plan, and make it their own, and make this report to them. They did none of those. And so they said, you have completely satisfied all of our requests. We feel that you've taken this matter extremely seriously. We shared with them all the work that we had done, and we feel that we moved mountains. I will say that I feel that we had good processes in place, just like every hospital does. When someone's going to do something, they're going to figure out a way to do that. And I would say today that we have industry-leading practices in place. We've installed over 100 cameras at Etomo Regional. The majority of those are medication rooms. Our medications are all behind two locks, and then there's even a more controlled process for our controlled medications. Today, every nurse knows that they are under camera when they remove medications and when they waste medications, and that process is highly regulated. And we follow that process on a weekly basis to ensure that both the dispensing from the automated cabinets, as well as the wastage, is being done according to policy. And so I will, I think, I am very proud to stand for you today and to let you and the community know that despite the events that happened at that time, the immense work that was done by members of this community, and by leaders of this, in this community, it resulted in not a single finding from the DEA. What also happened in that timeframe, we are regulated, we're highly regulated, and we have the Joint Commission, which is our, we pay them to come and do our surveys for CMS, which is the Centers for Medicare Medicaid Services, that... which is the Centers for Medicare Medicaid Services, that also covers us. The Joint Commission was here. They surveyed us. We had to make them aware of the situation. We submitted several action plans, and they accepted those, first go around every time. The state arrived, and they were on site for eight straight weeks in the period of February and March. And they were investigating things related to the death of the provider and the subsequent abuse that resulted from that provider's tie to the facility as a contractor. And we worked very closely and have been completely transparent with every survey that's been in our facility. We've been completely transparent with our staff. We've let them know every step of the way, everything that came to our attention. Because many of these people worked with the provider. Many of these folks had relationships with him and a lot of respect for him, to include members of our medical staff who were just in shock and were going through the grieving process. We had counselors onsite, I believe, seven different times to help our staff as new information came out. And as we issued new information, we shared information rather with our staff about the process. Because we were aware that many of our staff were defending, and we wanted to make it clear that once the information came out that they needed to stop that. There was no need to continue to do that, I would say. And so we had eight weeks of regulatory visits in February and March. And then regulators showed up, investigators showed up again in August, August the first, actually. And they were on site for twelve straight weeks this time. And if you can imagine, to have investigators in your facility for three straight months, it is incredibly disruptive. It is incredibly taxing. It is stressful in every sense of the word. And that resulted in what is called an immediate jeopardy. And so after twelve weeks of being on site, the last week, they said, "We want to now review video footage of what's happening in the behavioral health department." And I, we gathered, and I said, "Here, you know, if they've been looking for it, they're about to find it." And so in behavioral health, the nurse's station can never be unattended because there are items in the nurse's station that a patient could take, that could, that they could use to harm themselves or others. And they reviewed about seven hours of video footage, and in that time, they did find that the nurse's station was left unattended at one point. They stopped survey. They issued us what's called an immediate jeopardy to life. We had to immediately put an action plan together and give that to them that same day. They, that's called an abatement plan. They did accept our abatement plan. And now we are waiting for them to come back and resurvey us. They'll be back on site before the end of the month. And then we have more regulatory that's coming before the end of the year and into next year because of all the regulatory inspection that's already happened. And so there's just more to come. But we've heard folks say the hospital's closing because of the immediate jeopardy. And I will tell you, after twenty weeks of onsite regulatory review, if it took them twenty weeks to find something, I'm going to stand up here with a badge upon or say, "That's pretty remarkable." And after twenty weeks, they did find something, and they did issue that immediate jeopardy, which we immediately addressed. Actually, we had actually already addressed it prior to them issuing the immediate jeopardy, and we just wrote it up for them as an abatement plan for them. So that's the information there. We are not closing any services. We are not closing any departments. We are not closing the hospital. LifePoint is our parent company, and LifePoint has invested millions in this organization to help us get to where we are today and to keep the organization running and to make the improvements that we've made. And so this is not something that we're going to cut ties from anytime soon. And so we want to make that clear to the council and to the city leadership and to the community to let them know that we are fully invested here. We pay out thirty-two million dollars annually in salaries for this community. We pay two point eight million dollars in property taxes. We get a lot of flack sometimes that we are the only for-profit hospital in the state. I'm from Texas, and just about every hospital in Texas is for-profit. And instead of asking the community to support us through taxes, we actually pay taxes, and we ask for no support from the community. In fact, we operate 911 service for this community to the tune of about a one point six million dollar loss annually. And so that is even further commitment that we have in this community. We had six hundred thousand dollars in losses last year in EMS services when it came to expenses for our personnel. Those were personnel expenses. And then we are also, because we can't completely solidify that service, we have to use a third-party transport at times to get our patients to a higher level of care urgently or emergently. And we paid out a million dollars in transport services just in that alone, which is why we are working closely with the mayor and with the city administrator to solidify that service. We've also, in this last year, put together, let's see, one point eight million dollars worth of salary adjustments for our staff, and that's an ongoing expense annually from this point on. And so our nurses, our registration folks, our radiation therapists, our many, many other job classes have been adjusted so that we could get to market. And we're trying so hard to recruit. In fact, I want to say it to you, and I want everyone in the community to hear this. If you are driving outside of Atumwa as a healthcare provider, stop and come work for us. We very much want Atumwas taking care of Atumwas. And we put our money or our NAFIs for certain high-level needs. Someone can receive up to a thirty-five thousand dollar sign-on bonus, which is well above anyone else in the entire state. So we continue to do everything in our power to get Atumwas to care for the people who are there. Because we want, we want folks to receive the very best care. Our mission is to make Atumwa healthier. That is our mission. And we are working hand over fist to get there. We're not there today. We know that we have a lot of challenges and a lot of problems yet to overcome, but we are working very hard to do that. To flip the narrative on what happened last year, when it came to direct aversion and the death of the provider and then subsequent abuse, we joined something in the state called Billion Kill Pledge. And that, we partnered with a company out of Des Moines called Goldfinch. And they work with hospitals, I think that we are, they're seven or eight, and they're working to grow within the state and actually outside of Iowa now, to reduce the number of opioids that are going into the community after surgery. And so we have completely changed our preoperative process and our intraoperative process, where folks, before, when you're in an operation, can't drink or eat anything. And evidence has shown that if you have a high carbohydrate, clearly liquid before surgery, it helps the healing process. It helps to stabilize blood glucose levels. And also, we're encouraging folks to take ibuprofen or acetaminophen. I'm trying not to say the over-the-camera names. And so, because those also help with pain tolerance and pain control after surgery. And we're coupling non-opioid medications with some opioids and providing that education so that we will reduce the amount of opioids available. Because some of you may be aware, grandma or grandpa has surgery, and a relative or a grandchild might come over to visit, to pay a visit. But really, we're raiding the medicine cabinet because the opioids are available. And we're very proud to say that we were, on average, prescribing about sixty opioids after surgery. We're down to about twenty after every, and actually, some of our surgeons are prescribing zero. With good, you know, no one's going in pain, right? But we're, they're coupling medications that are non-opioid to meet that. And so we're very proud of that initiative. We want to be the leader in turning around the stigma of what happened at the organization, but also addressing an epidemic that is very real in the entire nation, but we all feel it here, which is the drug abuse that happens in this community, as well as the tie, the sister epidemic, which is behavioral health. And we are very proud to operate at the behavioral health department. We have fourteen-bed inpatient adult behavioral health unit. It has been underutilized in the past, and we have, through our leadership, have said, "We will take every patient that needs the care." And so we're trying to make sure that every bed is full and that the patients who are needing that care are receiving it at our facility. As a result of the event, we have an entirely new executive team. So I was asked to come here. I'm a Texan. I was told, "You need to be in Iowa in a week." And I said, "It sounded like you said Iowa and something about a week." And so I have been here, working very hard to give the organization where it needs to be. And we have a new CFO, a new chief nursing, chief financial officer, chief nursing officer, and Justin is our new associate administrator. All of these individuals have recently purchased homes in and around the area, and so they are going to be here long-term. I am your change agent CEO. The plan was never for me to be here long-term. In fact, when I interviewed for the job, I said, "You don't want this person to be here long-term." I've had to make lots of hard decisions. I've had to make lots of changes in the organization. And Atumwa has given us an associate administrator. We have a partner board with Justin. It's not a foregone conclusion that he will replace me when it's my time to leave, nor do I have an end date or an expiration date. But I think the investment is very clear that usually an organization our size does not have an associate administrator, but we work together with our corporation to say, "With everything that's going on, it would be best for this organization and for this community to have someone that is going to have bandwidth and a runway with me to learn the organization and learn our challenges and potentially be the next person to step in the spot." So that's why Justin is here. Want to let you know that we're working hard to change the culture of the organization. We have lots of employee events now. We, on a monthly basis, we go around with snacks. We do high fives to let people know that they're doing a good job. We had an employee picnic recently. We have recognition that we're doing that has not been happening historically. We're working hard to change the culture and reinvigorate goodwill of the organization. Community participation is important. I serve on the GoGet board now. Mark Rowan now serves on the hospital board. And so I think that's really important. We're working with Tom to get us into the community more so that we're sharing this message more face-to-face with the community, because I think that there is a lot of misinformation out there about what's happening. And I'll tell you that, and I want people to know this, you come to an emergency department, you're going to wait. That's part of having a busy emergency department. However, if you're having an emergency, I can tell you with certainty that you're going to get great care. We are going to save any life that comes to us. And we had an event last week. We had a female collapse outside our clinic that is now in the hospital property. It's adjacent to. Was found bleeding out in the parking lot. 911 services picked her up, brought her to the hospital. She had an urgent care. It was very tense for her and baby. And the organization came together and saved two lives just last week. That's what we do at Atumwa Regional every single day, and we're proud about that. We're proud of that and want to share that with the community. And so we're going to be doing more and more to get out and involved in community boards. Justin's looking for one. That's why we have Tom. We're getting to him, please. We're getting other members of our team on board so that we are working outside and being a part of the community, not just serving the community within the four walls, but also without the walls of Atumwa Regional. Let's see here. I think that hits the high points. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Justin. He'll talk about a few things, and then we'll take it from there.
Thanks, William. Pleasure. Good evening, everybody. So a little bit about myself real quickly. So I'm also a native Texan, and I'm from the Dallas Fort Worth area. I have been at, this is now my third LifePoint hospital, so very fortunate to be at a great company, great organization that has really shown me what mission it is. And that is making communities healthier, making Atumwa healthier. And so they've given me a great opportunity to come to Iowa, to come to Atumwa, and to be a part of a great hospital and to get it to where it needs to be. And that the goal is to truly put the regional back in Atumwa Regional. And so I wanted to give you a couple of updates on some service lines. The first is the cath lab. So many of you may know that we opened a brand-new state-of-the-art cath lab that opened July eighth, and we're very, very excited with that. And so some of the things that came with that was a new x-ray system and a new patient monitoring system, EKG, ultrasound, and contrast injections, and really just better quality. And so I think the big misconception with healthcare is that you have to go to the larger community. You have to go to the Des Moines. You have to go to the Iowa cities to receive state-of-the-art care. And we're here to tell you that is absolutely not true. Atumwa Regional has a state-of-the-art department. We have great care teams, nurses, techs, and everyone involved in this. And so really proud of the team and very excited for all the community members that were able to come be a part of that special day and really just wanted to let everyone know of all the great things that we're doing. And a couple of things that we also are doing because of this cath lab. Now we're also able to do pacemakers, which is a great need in the community, as well as cardiac implants. And so you don't have to leave Atumwa, you don't have to leave the region to receive life-saving care. And some other great things. And so as the community grows, as Atumwa Regional advances in some of our service lines, we're really excited to add to our physician service lines. And so we actually have the opportunity to meet with a general surgeon who is finishing up his fellowship currently in the Houston, Texas, area. He's come here once already, and so this time, he's bringing his wife and child to do a site visit. So we're very excited about that potential opportunity. This is a general surgeon that also specializes in surgical oncology. And so as we look about cancer care, this is going to be a potential surgeon that's going to be able to really help our community, keep these patients safe and keep them in the community so they don't have to travel elsewhere. And that's something that's very important to me, to William, and the rest of the team, is provide services that expand of what we've been currently doing and to truly give the community what they need. Cancer care is definitely one of those things. And so we're also looking at orthopedic surgeons. We have a couple that we're talking to. One is from Canada and a very great guy. And so one is also local somewhat. And so hopefully, we can recruit some more folks, get more service lines, be able to get more people the care that they need, and really just get back to the community. So that's a little bit about me, a couple of service line updates. And again, it's truly amazing to be in Iowa. I recently came from Las Cruces, New Mexico. And so never once did I think I would live in New Mexico nor Iowa. But I'll tell you, Iowa has been great for my wife and I. We're very happy to be here. And it's great to have weather again. And so I appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to meet some of you.
One of the things you might be wondering is why I'm willing to work for the hospital after retiring, but it seems to me we have a lot in common with the city. You serve the public, and we serve the public, and they both want quality. And I think, having been on the hospital work for a number of years and seen the development of both the hospital and the physician team, I want to assure people that we're going to work really hard to bring that quality issue to the forefront and let people know that they do be good services here. We've had the occasion to use the hospital recently and had great service. And so I think when you hear people say things about the city, the water works, the dam, whatever, straighten them up. Challenge them a little bit. Ask them where they got the information. Have they talked to William? Have they talked to Justin? Because a lot of information just gets repeated over and over and over. It's misinformation. We're hoping to get out into the community a lot more. If you have questions or if you have groups that you would like us to listen to, we'd be happy to do that. So looking forward to supporting the hospital, because as you know, one of the criteria that people look at is what kind of medical services do you have in your community? What kind of school system do you have? What kind of shopping? What are your taxes? What's your primary? They look at all those things. People are much more sophisticated about where they move to today. So we want to be sure that they know they're getting good medical services here in Atumwa. So thank you.
Council, have any questions for any of these two?
Yeah, I really appreciate you for coming, because like you said, with Hydro, with Tim, there's just a lot of misconceptions going around the community at Atumwa Regional. And people need to hear the great things that you guys are accomplishing out there to get the hospital back to its premier status that it used to be. So I really applaud all your hard work, and it sounds like you've got some things in the right place. You got nowhere to go but, so appreciate you for coming tonight.
Appreciate your time. Thanks so much.
Just kind of the transition, I'll say it wasn't just words that they were saying. Justin had the opportunity to help serve on a panel to work select the next fire sheet. And so we reached out to the hospital with the connection with EMS and fire. You and David sat through a day of interviews and presentations. He was able to sat through a day of interviews and presentations. And so we appreciate that and having that relationship that we're able to reach out like that.
I was just going to say too, they actually, the hospital was part of our Be the Light Suicide Prevention Walk this year too, not only as a like participant for the walk for participants, but they were also a donor. So or a sponsor, I'm sorry. So that was, like you said, it's not just.
And also the comments there about information, misinformation. City recently, a week ago now, has hired a public information officer who's here tonight, the person behind the camera, Travis Lawrence, going to be taking over recording the meetings. But much more than that, getting out to departments to provide information to the city, will be reaching out to community partners as well, anywhere that we can work to ensure that the correct information is being broadcast out there. Took over our website, social media sites, press releases, all of that. So helping to make sure that we have correct information out in the community. Welcome. The next thing on the agenda was talking about the status of financial reporting. And I had some comments on that. And it will seem our finance director wanted to speak, so I'll turn over to him after I make a few comments here. Recently, there have been a number of comments, concerns regarding the city financial picture and the absence of financial reporting. I was hoping to report tonight that we had reconciled any statements and accounts for each of the months for the previous fiscal year. Unfortunately, I'm not able to state that. I share the frustration and concern with the city council, city staff, committee, board members, candidates, and the public. We've been working toward completion of this information while maintaining daily operations. I feel it's important to note this issue has not gone unnoticed, and I'm committed to ensuring that we provide timely, accurate information to all of our stakeholders. On various occasions, city council members independently and collectively have and continue to inquire about financial reporting. They have been made aware of issues that current staff have been working through and have allowed some latitude. One of the biggest hurdles faced has been antiquated financial software package and the absence of a full staff in the finance department. While city staff and some contracted support have worked diligently to maintain the day-to-day operations of the department since the departure of the finance director in February of 2022, the city also experienced another loss when the account position vacated in May of 22. Looking back, there are a few things I would approach differently, such as beginning the process to hire the accountant position earlier. City was in the process of hiring the finance director when the account position was vacated, and the initial thought was to complete the hiring process and allow the new director to assist with the hiring of the accountant. Both finance director and account position have proven difficult to fill and were posted more than once. In October of 2022, city hired a new finance director who was immediately thrown into the audit process, state annual financial report, and the budget. City was utilizing some contracted and part-time support for the account role. And earlier this year, an accounting specialist left for another position, putting the department down two positions out of five once again. Last week, new accountant started with the city, and following the approval of the civil service list earlier tonight, will move to fill the accounting specialist position, bringing the department back to full staff. Looking ahead, I have been assured the state annual finance report is near completion, will be ready for publication and submission later this month. This report covers the activities of the city over the past fiscal year. Additionally, auditors will be on-site to begin the annual audit and comprehensive annual financial report for the city fiscal year 2023 in just a few weeks. I recognize the urgency of providing current and accurate financial reports, and am committed to taking whatever steps are necessary to ensure this occurs. One thing that I can do is to add an item to the agenda for every meeting going forward, where I'll provide a staff's report. Until such time, we have accurate, current financial information and a monthly report with which the city council is satisfied. Now I understand Wassim is asked to make some comments as well, and he can address any specific questions regarding processing procedures.
Welcome. Thank you for giving some time. When I talk about some of the highlights or some of the points that I will highlight, it is not making sure that we understand, it's not make any excuses. I'm going to just basically put together, put over the facts that happened. I joined the city job a year and maybe three weeks ago, in October of last year. When I joined it, as Phil already mentioned, we had a finance director position open for about 10 months, and then a company position open for about 5 months. So when I joined, on my first day, we were already about six to eight months behind in terms of rolling the month, in terms of reconciliation, and other things. And even some of the daily entries were not made in the system, like payroll, with the exception of maybe one of our payroll, major data were not done, credit card purchases were not entered for all of them. So when I joined, on my very first day, there was also the first day of audit. So first thing I got paperwork in terms of the list of items that they wanted. So I said, okay, we'll work on that. Then annual financial report was due kind of immediately. Things like that. So all of those things that happened, my first task was to make sure that the current information that we have is in the system. So I start working on those, making sure the entries are done, making sure the deposits are done, keeping in the system and all of that. Phil mentioned about the financial system we have. Our financial system that we have is about at least 20 years old. Technology has changed a lot in that time. But in our system that we have, it's very cumbersome. For example, if I enter something in the system and I don't save that particular entry or not print it, I cannot go back to the system and ask me, okay, reprint it. It's gone. There's no way to get it. I cannot enter in the system a decimal. It's that old, it's that old technology. I have entered the dollar amount, for example, go one hundred point five dollar, I have entered twenty five and you have your decimal. Does the system know it is twenty five dollars? Most financial systems that I have worked with, it's very easy to upload a bigger dollar. I cannot do that. I have manually, manually entered every single thing. Things like that. So that's a different challenge. That's a challenge we had. Then for the whole time that I've been here, with the exception of last week, I'm was wearing two hats. Company position is a very important position, and that position knows probably more than my other staff, for in and out of the board and things like that. So learning the job, learning the processes, learning where the information comes from, all of those things that I knew that to happen. But not knowing where the information is saved, how the work is put together, those are extra challenges that we have to overcome. We did all of that. Annual financial report was submitted, audit was completed, budget was submitted last year, all of those things were done. Rest assured, I'm going to make sure that the council law and the city of Atumwa, that I am fully dedicated and committed to turn it around, to turn it around. And that's why, it's not a brag, but also a fact, I work 10 to 12 hours every single week. I work on the weekend. And I am fully committed to turn it around. It is challenging. I think if somebody asks me, I've been around for a wide in finance work. And if somebody asks me, what are the most challenging jobs I have? I think this would top the list. Absolutely would top the list. But I think we have hired an accountant now. She's already, you know, making some progress. And so just going back to my commitment, I have not taken any vacation the whole year, just stay here and deal with the problem. That's all it is. So those are the facts, and I'm fully committed to turn it around. And I think I can see small by the end of the day. It's going to be bigger that once I have a fully staffed department. So I'm working as hard as I can and as much as I can. So that's the fact, and I think it will turn around.
Does counsel have any questions for Wassim?
I don't necessarily have any questions, more just comments. And this really isn't necessarily to the city administrator or CFO Wassim here, more over to the public. I know one of the things that have been consistently said over the last several months is, you know, this is an issue that's been either slept under the rug, ignored, whatever the case is. And I want to assure the public that this is not something that has been ignored. It's not something that has taken a backseat to any other issue. I can absolutely promise you, there have been a couple of us that have been in Phil's office on a regular basis over the last six months, probably where Phil doesn't like us coming into his office at all. So just rest assured that that's not the case, that it's been ignored. The conversations have been going on. They will continue to go on. Everybody knows that we have genuine concerns. I think that Wassim is intimately aware of those concerns. Administrator Raf is intimately aware of those concerns. I don't suspect that this is probably the last time that we're going to hear about the finance department over the next several months. But with that being said, I do want to address a couple of things since we're talking about it that is something that the public should be aware of and is going to be a conversation point over the next several months. So I would hope that nobody says, I didn't hear about it, or somebody's trying to sweep this under the rug. One of which Wassim mentioned is the financial system. It is an accurate statement to say that we have arguably the most antiquated financial system in the state of Iowa in a governmental agency. This is something that since I have been on city council going on eight years now has been a topic of conversation. The money has been budgeted in capital items several times in the past. And, you know, I said something about this earlier this year, and evidently it was popular because a couple of other people have said it also. But we kicked that can down the road several times over the past few years because financial systems aren't, they're not glamorous. They're just money that has to be spent, and there's no revenue that's generated from those financial systems. So that was kicked down the road. And what we see today partially is a result of a financial system that's completely antiquated. We went through a particularly painful audit process last year. Subsequently, we lost our audit firm, and we're going to have an even more painful audit process this year with having financials that basically are going to have to be reconciled on a yearly basis as opposed to a monthly basis. We also have new audit firm coming in, which means that there's going to be a level of audit detail that you traditionally don't see when you have multi-year audit agreements and experienced auditors in place. And lastly, I just bring up the staffing and the training. It has been unfortunate, the way that the staffing has been handled in the finance department in the city of Atumwa from a morale standpoint and from a training and keeping up with current practices standpoint. We have, as a city, has done an incredibly poor job of that. So this is something that needs to be rectified with the new staffing that we have coming in. And I would hope that the city of Atumwa is never in this place again. And I guess that would be my challenge to everybody that would have a role in that, to make sure that we invest in those employees, much like any other employee in the city. They're not just office workers. They're not just supposed to sit there and do mundane tasks. We're supposed to invest in those employees, much like we would with any other employee in the city. And my challenge would be to make sure those folks are happy and well-trained moving forward as well.
I want to also identify, and Administrator Raf, I don't think you've touched on this, but because of conversations that we had and the urgency that counsel brought to you, we did have two interim people come onboard to assist in the financial department too. So maybe you can touch a little bit more on that. I know that we've talked about it in past meetings, however, as we all know, not everyone watches those past meetings. So if you could just talk about those two individuals, either one of you, just to again give us an update.
Yeah, I can talk about one was, we have a remote person who works remotely. And basically what she is doing is all the big entries, all the general entries, all the entries that we have to enter in the system. I was in, because there was nobody else other than her. So for example, one general entry, they were general entry twice a month, it's like 400 times. And because of system limitation, I have to go into the system and enter nine by nine by nine. So she is doing that now for the last few months. Okay, she's doing that. And any other smaller general entry, what I do, I just lay the copy of the general entry and just scan it to her, and she answers. So that saves me a little bit of time. She also entry all the deposits. I scan the documentation, I kind of paint her what to look for and how to answer it, and she answers. She's doing one step of the process. Then I do the next step, which is basically the final entry in the system. So that was helpful. So that saves me some time to focus on other bigger issues. The other person that we have, she is an ex-finance director, I think Marshall County? Was it, or not, some other place?
She was the finance director in Clayton.
Oh, she was ex-finance director in Clayton. But I think most recently she was.
City administrator.
She was the administrator at Marshall County. So she has some, she has a hard understanding of the finance. So she comes on once a week at the most, twice a week. And I spend a few hours and look at the bigger picture of the problem. So that's not only happening, unless the fifth one.
Yeah, the other one would be Brad Barnes, and that was going back to in 2022. And that contract is still active. So there are some times here and there where we use him when he's available outside his regular job. Kind of more of a supportive advisory or question and answer for Wassim.
And just to go back to your Mark mentioned about the system that we have, it is such an old system that I sometimes I call the sport line. And we are only one of the few clients of that company who use certain option in the system. Because they don't have anybody else, very few clients of their, that company use that option. They don't have anybody who can help you out, how to explore and enter that particular option in the system. So I'm basically at the mercy of the manager. If I make a mistake in that, then it can't happen. So that, that kind of system.
So I just want to reiterate again, as counsel person Mark identified, that we are talking on a regular basis. We're having ongoing meetings with Administrator Raf about this, about our concerns and about the urgency to get to a place that we need to be, where, like we said, we had an accountant hired and hopefully we'll have some more staff hired within the next couple of months.
Hopefully sooner.
Two weeks, two weeks. I'm looking at our HR director. So more staff in the next couple of weeks too. So we do not take this situation lightly, and we just want to reiterate that and let you all know that again.
Yes, and that's for sure. I'm not taking it lightly. This is the most challenge that I have, and I will overcome this challenge, and I will turn it around, I can promise you that. Just keep you down with that. There's nothing, there's nothing, you know, put under that. Just so many of the issues that we have, it's just a company.
Any other questions or comments from counsel?
Yeah, so I've heard you, everybody up here has mentioned it at least once, the antiquated system. I keep hearing you talk about this, but I still have not heard anybody say, is there a plan to replace this system now?
Yes, yes. Actually, my first thought was, I'm a couple of weeks into my job, okay, let's change the system. But when I look at the current information that I have. But when I look at the current information that I have in my current system, I don't want to put garbage in in a garbage lot in the new system. So, I want to stabilize current system first. I want to be as sure as I can be that, okay? The information that I have in my current system is good, okay? Then I can pursue the other system. And we have some thought, we've talked about it, we've talked about it. I have talked to a couple of people. We have seen some demonstration of this system. So, it's in the process, but it's not going to, I'm not going to do it next month. Because I might not be sure of that system.
You want to make sure everything's updated first?
Ah, I want to make sure that everything's...
Make sure that the stuff going into the news is...
Yeah, I want to have the same issue.
Okay, awesome. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from council? Okay, well, thank you very much, Wasim. I appreciate it.
And real quickly before bringing Phil up for the last item on the academy report, one of the things I wanted to mention was with regard to city hall. So, we're in this building now. We have all of first and second floor have moved into the depot on the second floor. And we are preparing for engineering to make that move. Also, we're anticipating in a couple of weeks, around mid to late November, and then all of that will be done. So, there is asbestos abatement going on currently in city hall. And the move went well. But I wanted to just take a moment and give a shout out to a number of individuals who really helped to make this transition, what it was. If you were at the depot a couple of months ago, it looked much different than it does today. We had a number of staff pulled together to really make that a workable space for us. The electricians that we have, along with Edward and IT, pulling in all the wiring, making sure that our data for computers and telephones would all work. Building is museum. It had a number of rooms set up, but didn't have that kind of capability for all that technology that we need in today's office environment. The part staff, especially Don and Todd, that had done so much work with building the walls and just creating all that space in there that needed the doors. Most of the rooms didn't have doors on, so having to, we're in city hall and they're grabbing doors off of rooms that weren't needed anymore in city hall and put those doors up, getting, and then permanently working on getting the engineering area set up there. A number of staff across departments that came in to help paint. We had an estimate to paint the second floor of depot building. I believe it was about $25,000, a different tape?
Probably thirty, thirty-one.
Thirty-five, thirty-five thousand, sorry. So, it was, yeah. And at that point, one of the things that we did that had been going on is pulling together a employee advocacy group. And that was a suggestion that came out of that group, was to have a paint party. So, people do that in their homes. Well, this happened in depot. And over several days, there were staff that gave up a few hours to come over and paint. And it has made a huge difference. So, now we're in there, and it's a functioning office environment, which I just want to make sure that those individuals had received recognition. And then with the move, with moving company, all the people had helped out with that. Sherry, the clerk's apartment, that was a huge asset. We're helping even offices that weren't hers and helping to make that move there. So, just thank you to all of those individuals. And if you're in the area, stop by and check out the progress that they made. Or wait a few weeks, you can see the engineering department as well. With that, yeah, I'm just glad you said that because, you know, so many times, people always hear the negative stuff. And we really do have some phenomenal city employees. And I think this project, just like Phil said, goes to show that we really do have excellent city employees that are very committed to doing their share and working as a team when needed. And I have personally seen that myself for two years that I've been up at city hall. And I just appreciate Phil for recognizing the various people that had a part in helping us get moved, because it was a huge undertaking. And then another year, 16 months, or hopefully sooner, we're all going to have to go back. So, we're only halfway, halfway to them. I really do appreciate everything. I guess I'd like to just call on a little bit, our HR director did a really good job helping to orchestrate the painting of the employees and making sure they had stuff to eat and making it kind of a fun event and trying to do some things to help improve morale. And she had a big role in helping to help everybody get figured out where they were supposed to be when we got moved. And I just want to let you know, I really appreciate everything that you did during that process as well with our HR director.
Okay. All right, now, I will turn it over to Phil then.
Thank you. So, for those of you who are skipping ahead near agenda, you'll see that the next thing after this is a public hearing for Phase Eight Division Two, our sewer separation project. So, I thought it'd be a good time to kind of give everybody a refresh of course on what a CSO is, how this applies to Atumwa, what's been done so far in the city. And then kind of drilling down a little more detail into Phase Eight itself and then Division Two, which is what we're going to be talking about later on in the meeting. So, I have Ted Pacer with B and K. He's been here since the beginning. If you have any questions about previous stuff before I answer it. Randy Johnson, he's the engineer for Phase Eight, will be taking over this.
So, thanks, Bo. Thanks, everybody. Some of you have probably seen this presentation before, something I've given before. I'm not going to really dive into this a lot because I think we are going to come back and really dive into overall the project in the future here.
Yeah, we have Division Three coming up later this winter, which is a much bigger project than Two is. And I really want to go into a lot of detail on that when it comes up. And then we also have two phases of Division One that will be wrapping up in the next month. And we'll go into a lot more detail about what happened during those phases when we go to close them out. So, it's going to be kind of a quick overview in this presentation.
Okay, thanks, Bo. So, if you want to switch the slides. So, this here is Blakes Branch box. This is just downstream from the dam. This is kind of what you'll, we'll kind of get into. But this is where this combined system discharges. So, if you want to... So, a combined system, just an overview. The city of Atumwa, you know, has a combined system. So, storm and sanitary go into one pipe. And since, you know, and this would have been back in the 30s, 40s, it would just go right to the Des Moines River. Since that time, though, with the new rules with DNR, with EPA, you know, you can't just dump it into the river. So, there was another pipe built that went to the treatment plant. While when you get big rain events, it overwhelms the pipes going to the plant, and it discharges to the river. So, DNR, EPA has mandated that. The city of Atumwa, you're not the only one in the state, you're the only one in the country. You need to address this, and you need to start separating your sewers. Your storm has to be separate, your sanitary has to be separate. So, again, state of Iowa has 18 communities that have CSOs, or these combined sewers. So, you're not the only one in this situation, you're not the only one that's addressing this. So, this is just kind of a quick slide, you know. Dean K was hired in 2003 around that time and to help with developing a long-term plan, how to address all the CSOs that the city of Atumwa have. You have 10 CSOs. And I think we've already got three or four of them kind of removed over since that time. So, the 10 phases or 10 steps that we had to take through there, we are on Phase Eight, which is the Blakes Branch drainage. So, seven phases have already been, had a lot of work to them, with some of whom completely eliminating CSOs. So, again, our, to complete these 10 phases, you know, we're supposed to be completed by 2036. And I always put this down here because Ed was instrumental in this. Iowa was, or Atumwa was one of the first communities to get a 25-year schedule to do this. Everybody else was on a faster schedule. Next slide. This is kind of a, just a little quick of sewer of a project we separated. You know, one of the first one, again, it's Phase One through Seven. We'll skip through this one. This kind of shows separation project, that progress. South of Des Moines River, you can see all those little funny colored pipes. Those are all different projects that have happened since 2007 of other separation projects. You go north of the river, you see a little red, you see a little dark purple. That's stuff that's been happening, you know, over this past, I would say, five, six, seven years. I think overall, the community spent, or the projects have valued... Well, before Phase Eight, you had about 58 million in construction projects and 10. And I think a lot of the other leader or the city leadership in the past, you got about 28 million in grants. So, they're very successful in getting grants to help with this program. And that's going to kind of what we're going to talk about here on the next project, this Division Two, is the community was successful in the STAG grant, a federal grant to help pay for the next smaller project that we're going to talk about. If you want to do the next slide. We'll do the drone flight at the end, so we'll skip this slide. So, Blakes Branch Drainage, as you can see, the purple and the blue, this, all this sanitary sewer came down to the Des Moines River. This is a large area, a large chunk that the city's tackling right now. If you want to do the next slide. This shows you what was constructed in Blakes Branch. And this is an 1899 drawing of the first engineered drawings. This is an eight-foot in height, 10-foot wide double-wall brick box that was constructed over about 10 years. So, they would construct during the summer, get to the winter, they'd stop. And they pick up the next year, and they just continue on up the Blakes Branch. It was probably a creek. I anticipate it was a creek that they built this in and then just covered everything up, so it just looked like a typical road or just land. So, if you want to do the next slide. And in the green, it kind of shows you where the box is. About 9,000 feet goes a little north of Pennsylvania. So, that's the length of this box that was constructed. So, if you want the next slide. This map here just shows you Blakes Branch. And the color here is kind of steps we've been taking to separate the sewer in Blakes Branch. Because it's about 9,000 feet of Blakes Branch, but you have all the side streets that have the single pipe that dump into this box. So, not only are we building a separate sewer, trunk sewer to go north, but then we're having to separate along these side streets. And so, the, kind of in the middle, and we're Fourth Street is which we'll talk about. The blue area, that's, that'll be Division Two. Everything south, we're pretty much almost completed with. And like Philip was saying, hopefully in the next meeting or next two, couple of meetings, we'll have a final payment to the contractor and close out that project to the south. So, the blue area is our Division Two. Then just a little north, that little greenish area, that's Division Three. That'll be a larger project. So, the blue, we're around 5 million, the green will be around 12 million in construction. Next slide. And this is just kind of some cool pictures. This is what the box looks like. So, in 1899, people were building this, and now it's 2023. So, the craftsmanship and just the quality of construction is pretty impressive. So, we're not destroying this box. I mean, you might as well use this box for your storm sewer. So, what we've done is we're utilizing this for the storm sewer. We just have a separate sanitary sewer that will go to the treatment plant. Next slide. And this was just kind of a, just a quick overview of what our Division Two is. So, Fourth Street separation, you have Plum Street, you got a little bit on Birch, Cherry and Ash. So, the challenge of this project is we got two schools in between here. So, to be able to keep the traffic for the school open and while we're constructing this will be a little challenging. And Phil and I have talked, and after this meeting, after you guys kind of approve the plans and specs, we'll kind of even approach the school district just to make sure how we phase this over the next two years, that we minimize the impacts to the school district. And actually, that's pretty much it. I wanted to kind of keep this brief. We'll have probably more of a larger overview. But what we'll do now is if you got that drone, drone view, so Chad or one of, in public word, took this together, you guys have this capability. So, this kind of just shows you an aerial tour of what we've done so far to this day. So, we're going to talk about Division One, which is, this is south of the railroad tracks, south of Main Street. And a little bit on the left side is going up Birch Street. That's where the trunk sewer. So, now all of this area is separated. And then that pink area, the city already previously separated, so we just tied everything together. So, there's, you got JBS right there, Iowa Street. So, now all of this area, instead of having a combined pipe that went out to the river, we've now separated it. And then you can kind of see east of Iowa is the project we finished. It is that light green. That'll be 101s we'll be bringing together. And then I think the drone flight will kind of show up and go up north of Birch Street there towards Fourth, and we'll see where the Division Two is. Kind of cool technology nowadays to do this. Not only do we do this, but we can, we got videos of the whole, videos of the Blakes Branch. So, it's kind of cool to see all this stuff. So, Division One, you can see, so the trunk sewer went up Birch Street, the big 36-inch pipe that we're separating. And then just a little bit, and we stopped just close, short of Fourth Street. And now Division Two is in the blue. That'll be the area that we'll separate over the next two years. I think that's about, I think we're to the end. And I think we can just... Oh, you had a couple of shots where you spin the camera? Yeah, so you can see the two schools that are going to be right between us and stuff like that for our Division Two project. I think we're good. So, that's kind of it. So, again, what we, since we're bringing forward the plans and specs of the smaller project, we thought it'd be a great opportunity to just hit the little bit of the highlights. And then we anticipate coming back in a month or so and really getting you more of an in-depth detail of what the future plans are for this Blakes Branch separation. You know, open it up for any questions?
Does council have any questions?
Yes, I do. So, as we start to do these separations, do we also work with waterworks or plans to work with the waterworks in the future so that, like, because I'm guessing they have some projects too, so that we can kind of minimize roads being closed down and then work together? I don't know if that cuts costs or, but just helps increase that partnership too?
Yes, yes, definitely work with him and their staff and Mike over there. So, yes, when we put these pipes and we tear the street apart, and so we work with them with their water main replacement, you know, what they're trying to do so that we capture that all at the same time. So, we partner with them on that.
It helps and it hurts. And so, when we have all these streets tore up, they have, you know, we're talking about any water main underneath here, it's open, you can repair it cheaper now. Well, that's good for them in the long term, because they can fix that pipe when the street's already out. But in the short term, the money they have to fix pipe is fixed. So, when they spend all their money on streets we have torn out for sewer separation, they might have another pipe somewhere else that's even in worse shape. They have to put off for a year or two years to... So, we do work with them on it.
It's been a good partnership. It's been good for the community. They've been great to work with, so. Just like anyone else, there's only so much blood you can squeeze out of that turnip, you know, so. But just retired everywhere.
Perfect. And then I guess I just have another comment too. So, videos like this and then knowing like how much we've spent on sewer separation, I think would be a great thing to post on Facebook and other areas so that the public does know. So, when we hear we need to fix streets and we're not spending money on streets, well, we are, but it just looks different than to people.
And a great deal of money has been spent on the streets that we've put around town over the last 20 years. We've really improved a lot of the major thoroughfares.
Exactly. And I think that now that we have our PIO two, I think that's really good information to get out there to everyone so that there's true understanding of what we're doing, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else in your report?
No.
No, that's it.
That was enough.
Okay.
I'm just going to hang up.
The next item on the agenda is where I ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to... The next item, the next item on the agenda is where I ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on or address any of the items that are on our agenda tonight. We don't have any slips where anybody has signed any, but I, I always need to ask. So if we don't have anybody that wants to speak on any of the agenda items. We've got four public hearings, so we'll move into the public hearings.
This is the time, place and date set for a public hearing approving the plans, specifications, form of contract and estimated cost for the Blakes Branch Phase Eight Division Two Sewer Separations Project at Tumwa, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, I believe Phil, you're going to address this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this project consists of extending Phase Eight's thirty-inch separated sanitary sewer trunk line for five hundred and seventy feet up the Blakes Branch watershed, beginning at the end of Division One, which is around the intersection of Birch and Plum, and ending two hundred feet north of Fourth Street. This project will also construct twenty-seven hundred feet of new sanitary sewer, which will be connected to this new trunk line, and three thousand eight hundred feet of separated storm sewers. The Tumwa Water Works will also be replacing water mains within these streets that are disturbed for construction of new sewers. And then a total of thirteen thousand one hundred square yards of streets and four and a half square, four and a half thousand square yards of driveways and sidewalks to reconstruct as part of this project. The current construction estimate is five point one billion dollars, of which two and a half million will come from the STAG grant, which we'll talk about later in the meeting, and two point six million will come from the sewer fund balance. An estimated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of this will be reimbursed by Tumwa Water Works for the water main construction as part of this project. I hope you have any questions.
Counselor, have any questions for Phil?
I just have a comment. So again, I know that you say we're going to talk about the, um, the grant later, but, um, this, so the source of funds is not, can you explain the source of funds? I know we're going to talk about it later.
So the STAG grant is a state and tribal assistance grant. We were awarded this grant, I can write it down here. It was, we were awarded it last year. And then going through the process of getting all the EPA approvals for it, through the EPA. We got the final approval in October, like October twenty-third, I think, we got our final approval for it. So then you go, once you get your final approval done, you go and you actually apply for the funding online. And like I said, later on, we'll, we'll authorize the mayor to sign an application. I've already approved the funding, so the funding's there. And then the sewer fund balance, you know, we have money every year, we save them there for, for projects like this. And we're bringing the rest of it out of the fund balance.
Perfect. Thank you. You can take it now.
So just for clarification, and I know that this is repetition, but I, I feel like we, we need to have the repetition. It's great that we have the grant money coming in, but we have two point eight six million, two point eight six million? Or what am I back to, what's on that, two point six million?
Two point six.
Yeah, okay. So that's two point six million dollars that were mandated by the EPA to spend money on, to redo this, that, that we can't spend on other streets because we're spending it on this EPA mandate, correct?
Most of this comes from the sewer fund, so you still have the street fund, but it's, it's the city. Yeah, and that money's going to fix streets.
Yes.
Yes.
So we are fixing streets, and this is also because of a mandate.
Yes, if we didn't do this voluntarily, they would come in, tell us what our sewer rates were, and make us do it.
Which is not a benefit to anybody.
No, that's not a benefit.
Okay, just, okay, thank you.
Does counsel have any other questions for Phil? Since this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would have any questions or comments they'd like to make? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway? Yes. Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number one eighty-one, twenty twenty-three, approving the plans, specifications, form of contract and estimated cost for the Blakes Branch Phase Eight Division Two Sewer Separation Project at Tumwa, Iowa. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number one eighty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Who's the recommendations presented?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
This is the time, place and date set for a public hearing approving the plans, specifications, form of contract and estimated cost for the Richmond Avenue Pump Station Improvement Project.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, Phil's going to also present on this.
Thank you, Mayor. So this project consists of, will consist of improvements to connect an existing sixteen inch sanitary sewer force main to the Richmond Avenue Pump Station. It includes trench twelve and sixteen inch force main piping and eight inch and twelve inch piping in the interior of the pump station. And there's also valves and air vacuum releases that will be installed in existing pits. The Richmond Avenue Pump Station is located on the north side of Richmond Avenue to the west of Milner Street. This will be received and opened by the city of Tumwa on November twenty-ninth at two P M. The bid report and the sewer award recommendations will be presented to the city council meeting on the December fifth, twenty twenty-three, or other later dates determined by staff. So a little bit of background on this. Way back in Phase Five, Division Two, back in twenty fifteen, this sixteen inch force main was put in under the streets, but it was never connected to its outlet or to the pump station. So in twenty twenty-one, when we were renewing Milner Street, we had the intersection tore out, so we connected it on the downstream end and into the Finley Box. We bid this once before in October of twenty-one, and we got zero bidders. People were just too busy, they, they couldn't do it. So we are rebidding this now in order to connect this new force main to the, to the pump station. The existing force main was built in nineteen fifty-one, and we pulled out two sections. We were repairing Milner Street that were completely worn away on the bottom, and there was nothing there. So we're hoping to get this reconnected to the new force main and abandon that old force main in place. This will also increase the capacity, by increasing the pipe size from twelve inches to sixteen inches, it'll increase the capacity of the Richmond Pump Station to pump more volume and reduce the amount of C S O that are going into the lagoon.
Does counsel have any questions for Phil? Since this is a public hearing, does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments they'd like to make? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number one eighty-two, twenty twenty-three, approving the plans, specifications, form of contract and estimated cost for the Richmond Avenue Pump Station Improvement. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number one eighty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Who's the recommendation is presented?
Second. Is there any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
This is the time, place and date set for a public hearing on the proposal taken by certain real property known as eight oh seven Lee Street at Tumwa, Wapalo County, Iowa, to Kurt Cochran.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, I believe Zach's going to present on this.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, counsel. The next two items are properties that the city received title to under legal actions we took in our Iowa Code Section sixty-seven A, where we do try to take titles of a property and convey it to someone who will rehabilitate it. For eight oh seven Lee, we accepted bids until two P M on October fourth. We received nine bids, and Kurt Cochran submitted the best bid in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. So staff recommends accepting that bid.
Does counsel have any questions for Zach? Since this is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments that they'd like to make? If not, I would go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Chris will then take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number one eighty-four, twenty twenty-three, approving and authorizing the conveyance of certain real property known as eight oh seven Lee Street at Tumwa, Iowa, to Kurt Cochran for the sum of fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number one eighty-four, twenty twenty-three.
Who's the recommendations presented?
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
This is the time, place and date set for a public hearing on a proposal taken by certain real property known as two fifteen North Benton Street at Tumwa, Wapalo County, Iowa, to Ariseli Andrade.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Zach's going to also present on this property.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the same situation of the property, the city had the title to through the same process. We accepted bids until two P M on October fourth. Four bids were submitted, and something happened that has never happened before. We had a tie for the winning bid. We worked with the city attorney to identify a good process, and we had the two individuals with the ties submit a second sealed bid for their best offer. And Ariseli Ariad, or, uh, Andrade submitted the best bid, in this case, for five thousand five hundred dollars, and staff recommends awarding, uh, or second that bid inside the property here.
Does counsel have any questions for Zach? Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments that they'd like to make, since this is a public hearing? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number one eighty-five, twenty twenty-three, approving and authorizing the conveyance of certain real property known as two fifteen North Benton Street at Tumwa, Wapalo County, Iowa, to Ariseli Andrade for the sum of five thousand five hundred dollars. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number one eighty-five, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Who's the recommendations presented?
Second. Chris will then take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, we have no ordinances, so we'll move on to Department of Order Commission Recommendations and Reports.
Approved payment to the Wapalo County Sheriff's Department in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and twelve cents for the police department's portion, which is the third, of the total cost of the yearly programming maintenance fees of the in-house computer software. Recommendation, authorize payment of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and twelve cents to the Wapalo County Sheriff's Department for programming maintenance fees of the in-house computer software.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
He stepped out for a moment. Would you like me to speak?
Yeah. Well, I can read staff somewhere, it was too.
Thank you. It's so rare that you get to speak in front of others.
Yes, it is.
Okay, um, are we, are you, are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay. So the central square, this is our joint can and our software, the sheriff of Wapalo County. We pay a third, Wapalo County pays a third, and then the nine one one board pays a third of the total annual maintenance fee. And then our portion of that is twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and twelve cents. And that's a recurring cost every year.
And you budget for that, correct?
Yes, we do.
Does counsel have any questions for Police Chief Fairington? Uh, thank you. Yes, Chris will then take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Authorization to proceed with assumption of the lease-to-own agreement for the irrigation panel proceeded through Gulf Course. Recommendation, authorize staff to work with Integrity Gulf LLC to transfer the lease-to-own agreement for the panel needed to operate the irrigation system at Cedar Creek Golf Course.
Who's the recommendations presented?
Second.
Okay, Phil, I believe you're going to take this?
Yeah. So prior to the, prior to the decision to resign Greg Wilson at integrity golf and sign a lease-to-own agreement to purchase equipment necessary to operate the irrigation system proceeded through Gulf Course, the remaining balance of that agreement is seven ninety thousand three hundred dollars. With Wilson's retirement, the agreement would be voided, the company would reclaim the equipment, rendering the system inoperable. The cost was part of the original equipment list offered to the city and was part of the prior purchase and reimbursement agreement. But due to the timing of, of the year and everything, the company has stated that if there was not an interest to continue that, or sign over that lease agreement, that they would just reclaim that equipment and it wouldn't be able to have the irrigation system. The thought being this, this future cost being covered by the future operator, being able to reclaim that through a reimbursement. We have RFP request proposals out currently, and as of the deadline of the third, there were four companies that had expressed interest to submit a proposal and have some subsequent questions go along with that. And the process of finalizing those responses due tomorrow. And, and then the twentieth, November twentieth will be the date that any proposals will be due into the city from, from any of those four individual or firms. So part of that process is requested that they would give us a dollar amount per year that they would be turning over to the city to have exclusive rights to operate the golf course. In addition to that, was establishing a, a dollar per round to be put towards capital cost. So there should be revenue to reclaim as part of that for the city to, to authorize this transfer of the lease.
Does counsel have any questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number one seventy-four, twenty twenty-three, authorizing the mayor to sign and staff to submit the application agreement under the Iowa Department of Transportation General Aviation Vertical Infrastructure Program for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four and authorize the mayor to sign the contracts. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number one seventy-four, twenty twenty-three.
Who's the recommendations presented?
Second.
Okay, JB, follow yours.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. The Iowa DOT Grants Program offers grants for aviation-related projects. This agreement is for funding for an additional T-hanger at Tumwa Regional Airport. The Iowa DOT agrees to reimburse the sponsor for fifty-five percent of the total cost, not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars from the Iowa DOT. This resolution will authorize the mayor to sign the contracts with the Iowa DOT once funding is awarded. We also have three years of bill funded by Public Architecture Law Money for a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year that will be used by the time this project is completed into fiscal year twenty-five and get that extra hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to help cover the cost of this.
And the new T-hanger would allow for how many additional?
We're looking, we're looking at six. We have, we get phone calls all the time, people looking for hanger space. And in our big hanger, we do have some extra room at times, like tonight, we got two big canisters sitting in there. But there's a lot of other people, you know, they have an aircraft worth seven hundred and fifty thousand, a million dollars. They don't want a new T-hanger where there's just lots of chances of getting hangar rash and stuff like this.
Does counsel have any questions for JB? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number one seventy-seven, twenty twenty-three, approving the purchase of six light poles by the Electrical Department in the amount of twenty-six thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number one seventy-seven, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So.
Second. Okay, Phil.
Um, the electrical, thank you, Mayor. The electrical department, they're replacing the city's metal electrical pole, or metal light pole, straight light poles for the last six years, um, since twenty fifteen, maybe seven years, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. The current poles are thirty-six years old, they're resting out at the base. So what we do is we take, buy six poles every year, and the worst ones, they'll, they'll pull out and replace. So this resolution is to purchase six poles. The only company that has these poles that match the rest of ours are Crescent Electric. So they're the only bidder on it. This annual placement started in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, like I said before, and it's been ongoing every year since then. It's a budgeted item, and there's no budgeting needed.
Does counsel have any questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number one seventy-eight, twenty twenty-three, approving the execution of an affidavit of possession and explanatory title. Recommendation, pass and adopt. Recommendation, pass and adopt Resolution Number 178, 2023.
Who's the recommendations presented?
Second.
Okay, Phil, I believe you're gonna address this.
Yeah, Mayor and Mayor. In preparation of leasing the property for the creation of indoor sports complex, it was identified with land in question and mistakenly conveyed to administrative agency, which did not have the ability to own land, was the board of Parks Commissioners, I believe. The action corrects that error and identifies the city as the owner of the property, thereby providing the ability into a lease agreement with the entity to operate the sports complex. So the resolution does mention that this property was conveyed to the Board of Park Commissioners by way of a quitclaim deed dated December 28th, 1965. Board of Park Commissioners was an administrative agency of the city, later replaced in 1975 with the Temple Park Advisory Board. The Board of Park Commissioners and the Temple Park Advisory Board never authorized an owner dispose of city property, and thus, the conveyance from the city to the Board of Park Commissioners was by error, and the city has at times remained, as at all times, remained the owner of that property. So this affidavit is correcting that, it will be filed with the county and then reported as such, so that all of those properties should be identified as owned by the city of Temple rather than the Board of Park Commissioners.
Council have any questions for Phil? Not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 179, 2023, requiring a petition to the City Planning and Zoning Commission for the renewal of the downtown Temple self-supporting municipal improvement district. Recommendation, pass and adopt Resolution Number 179, 2023.
Who's the recommendations presented?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Simonson.
Thank you, Mayor. Chapter 386 of the Code of Iowa provides development districts for which a tax is levied for improvements within the district. Such a district was established for downtown Temple, effective July 1, 2019, and that district is set to expire. A timely petition was filed to renew that district. The petition needs to have at least 25% of property owners signed on, and also owners who represent at least 25% of the assessed value downtown. Staff's review of the petition indicates that it does appear to meet those initial requirements. And so the next step would be to refer the petition for a recommendation by the City's Planning and Zoning Commission, and that recommendation would be presented to the council, along with an ordinance which would extend the self-supporting improvement district. If approved, that ordinance would be the same district that is in place now. The only change would be a proposal to have the district last five years instead of the original three years. So the tax would be an additional $1 per thousand in the properties in Zone A, which is sort of the edge of the downtown district. As you get closer, that would increase to $2 per thousand in Zone 2, and then $3 per thousand in Zone 3, which is really just kind of the core blocks of Main Street in Temple. These funds have been used to the benefit of the district as determined by the SMID Committee, the self-sustaining municipal improvement district. Previous projects included trash enclosures, likeable maintenance carp for Main Street at Temple, dog waste bags, near the trash cans, ashtrays, and support for the Business Builder Academy in Main Street at Temple.
Council have any questions for Zach? Matt, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 180, 2023, approving a subordination agreement between the City of Temple, South Temple Settlement, and RG Property. Recommendation, pass and adopt Resolution Number 180, 2023.
Who's the recommendations presented?
Second.
Okay, Zach.
All right, thank you. RG Property participated in the CD EG Upper Story Housing Grant last year, and the city holds a forgivable mortgage securing their compliance with certain rules for that program. They have to rent out the apartment at a certain rate and that kind of thing. That mortgage is for $515,000. The RG Property is seeking some credit with South Temple Savings Bank against the value of that building. And South Temple Savings Bank is asking to have their loan that they'll make placed in a first position in the city's mortgage that would be in a subordinate position. We've typically allowed those subordinations from our security position because it doesn't really change the purpose of the mortgage. The purpose of our mortgage is not to get the money back from RG, it's to secure their compliance with the rules of the program. We would only need the money back if they don't follow those rules, so it doesn't really affect us whether we're in a first or second position there. So we have generally granted these, and passing this recommendation would be to approve this subordination.
Does council have any questions for Zach? Not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 183, 2023, approving the state and tribal assistance grant application for Phase Eight Division Two and authorizing the mayor to sign the application. Recommendation, pass and adopt Resolution Number 183, 2023.
Who's the recommendations presented?
Second.
Okay, Phil.
Thank you, Mayor. So this diagram, the application, is for funding Phase Eight Division Two, like we said before, which is along Forest Street between Wilson and Temple High School, and then near there along Plum and Ash and Cherry Streets. This work includes full-depth hardwood street reconstruction, replacement of sidewalks, ADA standards, storm and sanitary sewer improvements, water replacement were requested by Temple Waterworks. This grant itself was awarded on June 30th, 2022, in about $2.5 million. The final EPA clearances were received on Monday, October 23rd of this year. This funding requires a 20% minimum local match, which we will meet, no matter how the bids come in. And the match itself will come from the sewer fund balance. So this was awarded to us last year, there's a whole clearance process we do, and this application is the application to release the funds. So I filled out the application online, and once this passes, I can hit submit, and they'll send it to the mayor for his signature.
Does council have any questions for Phil? Okay, if not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you. This is the point in our city council meeting where I'd ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on any items that are not on our agenda tonight. If not, we'll go ahead and move on to Mayor and City Council reports and announcements. Does anybody have any announcements they'd like to make?
I do. So first and foremost, if this was live, I would tell you all to go vote. If you haven't voted today, you can still go vote, so go vote.
Till 8 o'clock?
Till 8 o'clock, so. The next thing I want to say is, so today, we, again, if this was live, then I would be able to let them know live, but I'll email them now. So we have eight houses participate in our Spooky Nights in Lights, and again, thank you to our judges of Chief Barrington, Mayor Johnson, and Councilperson Hull down there. So I'm gonna announce our top three today. So let me tell you that this, it was a very tough decision, and our top three were off by only a few points. And so our third place are Tyler and Tiffany Stevens, and they were on Debbie. And our second place was Chuck and Janet Gould, Gould, Gould. I'm so sorry if I pronounced that incorrectly. And they were on Gladstone. And then our first winner, or sorry, our first place winner for our first Spooky Nights in Lights were David and Debbie Truitt, and they were on Van Buren. Our plaque is not ready yet, but once our plaque is ready, we'll have them come in and officially recognized. But I am beyond grateful for everyone who participated this year. And I'm also excited because not only did we have houses participate, but all over social media, Snapchat, Facebook, people are actually out getting, out seeing the houses, and so it was a fun little thing for people. So that's that. The second thing I want to bring to the attention for our next city council meeting, there have been concerns raised regarding the international fire code and how it has been affecting our local small businesses, especially in regards to the upper stories. So I would like to bring a vote forward at our next council meeting to rescind the prior vote, which will give us a chance to reevaluate and ensure the consistency in our fire code and then that it benefits all the buildings and also ensures safety. And then finally, maybe Councilperson McIntyre was gonna talk about this, but don't forget that Saturday is Veterans Day, and there is programming starting at 10:50. Councilperson McIntyre, remind me where that is.
American Legion.
The American Legion, so we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
And I guess I would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank Councilman Hull for his work on the city council. I believe this is gonna be his last city council meeting. He's been filling in and taking over the term that former Councilman Bob Meyer had. So I want to extend our appreciation to Russ for everything that he's done, and wish him well. And thank you for your title commitment on serving on the council these last two years. Is there any other announcements or any other communications that council would like to make?
Can I just take clarification from Councilmember Galloway? When you said on the fire code, you wanted at the next meeting an ordinance to repeal the current code and reinstate the previous, or what was it you were asking for?
Correct. Yes.
We'll take one of that, we'll put legal, or put legal and see what needs to be done to push those steps.
And I guess if it's because you're working with legal, it can't be the next one in the next few. So I understand that working with legal means take longer, so.
Well, we at least get something on the agenda to address this, yes.
Phil, did you have any other announcements or things you want to make?
No.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Did it take long?
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, to your attendees tonight for the Capitol meeting, the track of songs.